Recording.
Okay. This is a meeting of the Hammond Board of Selectmen, the Hammond Board of Health and the Selectmen's Office on December 14th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. The meeting is being conducted remotely using video conferencing technology as approved by the emergency order of Governor Baker in March of 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? Please raise your hand or signify in some other appropriate manner. Seeing none, I want to make a couple of brief comments before we begin. First of all, today, of course, is a historic day for two reasons. First of all, is because the Electoral College met to ratify the vote of the people for President and Vice President of the United States. And I'd like to congratulate and thank Town and Minister Bob Markle for participating this important act of democracy as an elector, and I applaud him for his actions. The first presidential election was held historically from December 15, 1788 to January 10, 1789, extended over a one-month period. And the first Electoral College was first convened in February 4, 1789. They unanimously elected George Washington as the first Vice President of the United States with 69 electoral votes. And John Adams was elected Vice President with 34 electoral votes. Since that time is outlined in the Constitution, the Electoral College has met every four years to cast each state's electoral votes as expressed by the will of the people of each state, and today is that day. And again, Bob, thank you for your participation. The second comment, of course, is that today, historically, the COVID vaccine is being administered. This should be recognized as a great achievement by researchers, scientists, and medical professionals. It's the light at the end of the tunnel, but it's a long, long tunnel still. So we all need to stay vigilant, don't get complacent, wear your mask, socially distance, sanitize, and avoid crowds, and we'll get through this. And lastly, it's been a difficult and confusing, sometimes frustrating, sometimes scary year. So I'd like to extend to all the town employees, the teachers, firefighters, police officers, highway departments, senior citizen staff, the elected and appointed boards and committees, the volunteers who hung in, kept at it, did their jobs, and kept the town running during the unusual year. My, and I'm sure the boards, I'm sure I speak for the board, my heartfelt appreciation gratitude for all of you for your efforts on behalf of the town, and let's keep it going to get through this. Thank you. First item on your agenda is the minutes from December 7, 2020.
I have read through them, and I again had a couple of little word changes.
I'm sorry. I read through them. I've had a couple of little word changes, which I will give to Pam, but they don't change the content of it at all. It's like an "and" and "he." So I make a motion that we approve them as written.
In the particular, second refusal, particular, the V-word. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next item we have on our agenda is the Mass Gaming Commission, which is interesting. Back in 2015, 2016, the then Board of Selectmen went to the Massachusetts Gaming Commission to seek mitigation funds for the new casino that was built in Springfield. At that time, they were notified that they were not eligible for the mitigation funds.
Basically, it was pretty unusual, Don. We drew the wheel around Springfield, and if you looked at all the pie slices, we were the only slice left out. You know, and you look at towns like Ludlow, et cetera, which has no really contiguous place to where the casino was being located, and they were covered. So we were a little chagrin. I think we picked up a salad on the way home and said, well, maybe we'll get lucky. And I think we were committed to the secondary distribution.
So four years later, we received a phone call from the Gaming Commission asking what we were going to do with the $100,000 that they gave us in 2016. And how do you intend to spend it? And we said, what? And apparently, they neglected to send us a letter or notify us, or never got here. So we have $100,000 in casino gaming mitigation funds that we need to spend or eligible to spend by December 31 of 2021. So part of the proposal that the Selectmen, previous Board of Selectmen, John, had put in was to the entrances to Hamden, Allen Street, and those roads that would, you know, well-traveled roads. And I think that what we're talking about now is perhaps this could be money that we could be used to do that crosswalk from Centennial Commons to Gary's and do that.
Yeah, basically, it had to be reflective of the impact on the town of Hamden, which is, we presented, we were a cross through, if you will, much like Route 5 in Long Meadow, that was part of their argument. So we said, well, people are heading to the casino either coming up Summers Road, down Allen, or coming from the east, much like Bob just did from Boston. And so I think any mitigation funds have to be spent on the impacted area. My suggestion to the board was, maybe this is an opportunity to pay for that crossing at Centennial Commons because it is in that travel route. So it'd be only right that the casino should pay for that upgrade for the seniors. So I think it's something worth the Board to explore.
And what's the process from here? Do we submit to the Board, to the state?
We have a conference call with...
We do. There's a call, conference call coming with instructions as to what we do now. Yes, correct. I did. You know, the fact that they didn't inform the town, the fact that they didn't inform the town for four years, and I've had several conversations, and it's been fairly confusing. I think it's just a new commission, and they really weren't up to speed, and they didn't have the administrative staff to get the job done properly, but we do have this windfall.
Well, what's the, if we are wanting to be on that call, is it Tuesday or Wednesday? I think it's Wednesday, right?
Wednesday.
Okay. If several of us want to attend that video call, which I treat as more of a webinar, if you will, not a decision-making thing, do we need to post that, or are we just hearing instruction from the state, basically?
I think this would be one of, this is going to be a webinar-type session. You will not be deliberating or debating, but rather listening, and my sense is that you'll probably be muted all that time anyway. So they just want to convey information. That's a standard technique now for the state of Massachusetts.
Okay. Windfall.
Would I check clear?
What do you, any discussion about the crosswalk? That would be the thing, the main thing to do? You got any other ideas or?
But I think if we maybe enjoy market, I don't know if he's on the call here, get into some sense of, I think Pioneer Valley Planning Commission would be the right people to help with that, you know? Obviously, they work in many communities for that type of thing, you know, for that type of hardware. So get a sense of what the cost is there, make sure that the, no guarantee of that that. I'm shocked it's coming in this year. I really want to see that check clear, especially with casinos being as down as they are this year. That's really, this must be leftover money that they're finally dispersing. So I would suggest perhaps a planning and/or highway contact planning or valley planning commission.
I think it's key that this whole thing be done in a timely fashion anyway, so we bring some closure to the whole thing after five years, you know, not wait till the December deadline. And I'm wondering if the capital planning committee, this would be something that would go before them, before it came to us, but that would slow down the process. So it may be that it's, because this is so imminent and has been carried on for so long, we should just act on it and bring the capital planning and...
I don't really consider capital planning because it's not a long-term asset. Basically, it's just infrastructure improvement. You know, we're doing an improvement to one of the roads for a crosswalk.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you're going to have a lot of options there. It must, the expenditure must be related to relieving or mitigating the effects of the casino, presumably on traffic on Summers Road and Allen Street.
Okay. That's fine.
All right. Any further discussion? So you'll go, you'll be on the webinar, who was ever going to be on it will be on it. We'll learn some more and then go from there. The capital planning mission statement or, we want to call it mission statement or?
I called it mission statement. As John noted before, at a previous meeting, there had been some discussion about a capital planning committee and a draft of a, or a sheet outlining the parameters that that committee would operate under, okay? And so I took what I had written the first time, because I didn't realize that this other sheet existed, and combined it with the one that John gave last week, and tried to come up with a, an overview of where we stand on this. It seems to me that all committees that we establish should have particular criteria that we, that we give them. So that should be a mission, organization, a reporting system, when they were appointed, and for how long. And then when the Board took some action, so we have some dates on everything. I also think that the document has to be easily read, pretty simply written, so people can refer to it easily and know what they're supposed to be doing without having to go through, you know, a lot of verbiage. So I rewrote it and put in most everything. I took out of the first draft that I gave to you last week, the 2% of the budget that Don had mentioned, because I thought that was just muddying the waters a bit and making it a little more, a little bigger than it had to be. And there's a, the other difference that I did was the change in the membership on the committee. It had been one member of the Board of Selectmen, two members of the Advisory Committee, two members at large to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, by the moderator, and the town accountant and the treasurer. And it seemed to me a little unwieldy. So I revised it to be a five-member committee with two ex officio members. So I think maybe you can take this and read it over, because obviously, you know, you might want to absorb it more, and we can decide, one, if we want to use this for all committees that going forward, if these are good headings to use, and then, two, if this is acceptable for the planning committee. Pardon me?
What are those positions?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure. Go ahead.
I think you got it. Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I didn't quite totally understand what you were proposing. So if you could just go back a little, I'm sorry, Kathy Pesolano, Mary Ellen, if you could just sort of reiterate what it was you were proposing with the capital improvements committee, I appreciate it. Sorry.
That's fine. We have a capital planning committee, okay? Being the newest member on the board, I did not realize that there had been drafted a capital planning committee overview sheet of sorts, okay? So, but I think as, in all my work with committees, it is important that they have a mission, an organization, a reporting system, and we give them clear guidelines so that we get the best work out of them and that we can benefit most from what they have to say.
Certainly.
So I made up a sheet and proposed it to the Selectmen, at which point, John pointed out that we have this other document. So I took the two documents, my original one and this one, and tried to combine them in a user-friendly, sensible, easy-to-read kind of document that a committee could use. I also, as part of that, think that going forward, when we establish committees, these headings would be good to use so that everybody recognizes the organization and the reporting system, and we can hold people to that standard and be more productive.
Perfect. Will advisory be getting a copy of this, if the Board of Selectmen approve it?
Yes. I don't see why not. Yeah, sure.
Great.
Everybody would get a copy, the whole committee, the planning committee, whoever committee was involved would get a copy of it.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Obviously, the original charter, if you will, was approved, I believe, at a town meeting. So I'm a little, I think we're a little...
I couldn't find it. I looked at it again.
And if you look at the report, and I think Jim Smith was really, and Austin were instrumental in getting it together. So...
One of the suggestions along those lines is that we date everything so that when we get the document, I know where to look for it, because I did look through and I, you know, I may have overlooked it, but, so if we put dates on things, that would be helpful to me.
You mentioned about the size of the committee. I think we, with the two people you added last week or so, we're at seven right now. So you're thinking seven's too large for a committee?
I thought that the makeup of the committee as stated in the original sheet that you gave me...
Seven.
Was, I think, was seven, and then I thought there would be two more. I thought it would be nine when we finished, by the time we finished. I don't know.
No, the current sheet has five members...
Two advisory, two members at large, there's four, okay?
One Selectman and then two ex officio.
The town accountant and the treasurer, right?
The town accountant has said that he is not going to be able to participate.
Okay. Okay. There would be a transition...
Mr. Collins is not going to be able to participate either.
Oh, that's...
But my point is, so there were five members with two ex officio members.
Yes, yes.
So it was seven in the past, so if you think that's...
That's not a huge change, right?
That's where we are now.
Right. It's five and two.
And I think you said, you said that seven you thought was too unwieldy.
Well, I do, I do think seven is large, and I do, and I also think that the committee should be comprised of, like, I don't think it needs a member of the Board of Selectmen there, because they're reporting to us. I don't think it needs necessarily two members of the Advisory Committee. I think that it should be community-based so that we get new faces and new ideas and new positions and new expertise to bring to the table. And then they're going to be telling us, you know, what, then we, we have our input at that point when they get to us. That's what I thought. But again, this is a committee process, so it can be whatever the committee decides.
But we've already appointed three community members.
Right.
Right?
Well, we did, we appointed two. I don't think we appointed Thad yet. We said, you said he was going to, you had asked him, but I don't think we met, did we do involve? But I don't think we took a poll.
Well, I'm concerned that, you know, you're going to be upset that we have, although we do have other members that are, first, the Mora's on the committee. Oh, God, who else? Mora's, Pam Rogers on it. So really, you have quite a few at-large members right now. And I'm trying to think, who is the rep from advisory? I think it's Heather, right?
Heather Turett was on it when I went to...
Well, Heather and Doug both are on the committee.
Right. So if you look at the fact we have Mora, Pam, Lisa, Donna, and Thad, that's five basically at-large members. I think that satisfies your concern.
But I was originally appointed under the guise that I was from the community, because at the same time Nancy Zebra wanted to get on and was kind of overlooked.
I mean, you're still...
I wasn't on school committee when I was appointed.
Rep, per se, yeah. So I think we have five at-large members, two advisory, one Selectman, so, plus, as you said, you know, we had the town accountant, whether he wishes to or not, his input, and Dick as well. Right now, Don, do the math, what is that, nine?
Seven, yeah.
No, it's got to be more.
Selectmen...
You have five, five at-large.
Pam, Heather, Doug, and Lisa, that's seven.
No, then you got, you have two we appointed, Donna.
Oh, yeah, Donna.
We got that. Well, it's five at-large, and you got the accountant, the treasurer, Heather, Doug. Yeah, going to need a bigger table. Anyhow, let's work this out, but I think your changes bear merit, and I think we can put this to bed soon.
Right. So you can read it over. You can, we can say what we think the composition should be, the number, what is the most effective number to have for a meaningful committee? Anybody else can go to the meetings, because they're all posted, so anybody else can go and give input if they choose to, and then by next week, hopefully, we can say this is what we're doing, right? So if you give me your changes, I will just put them in, or you can bring them to the meeting, however you want to do it.
Okay.
And if we like these headings for future meetings, if we, if we think that when we establish committees, this is a good model to follow, then do we like these headings? Or would you like something else as a heading? You know, we've got mission, organization, reports, and appointments, and the date was established. So those are the, those are the things that we have right now.
All right.
Want I to ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead, Mora.
So is this, how will this change how we've done some of the other subcommittees? Because now I believe John originally mentioned that capital planning was considered an ad hoc committee. Is it going to be treated similar to like when we did the solar bylaw committee and they were a subcommittee of planning, the planning board, where they just provided the information to the planning board? I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to understand what these changes are, and then will it be established at some point how long those that are appointed will be, will be appointed or be replaced?
Personally, I personally would like some clarity, perhaps from Bob contacting Rose for some of these ad hoc committees that are providing information, as you said, to a board, much like the ambulance committee, much like, oh, solar, that's a good reference, and how requirements are for that type of posting, noticing, do they keep minutes, et cetera? You did a good job of keeping minutes for the solar bylaw things, but so to speak, you didn't expect, you know, 30, 40 people to show up and...
Well, this is Nancy Zebra.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Okay. I had sent to the town administrator a couple weeks ago that, that it came right from the Attorney General's office, their Division of Local Government or Services, and any committee that appoints what you might call a subcommittee, and the appointing committee gives them a mission and they report back, those meetings have to be posted.
I think that's true. Yeah, that's true.
The fact that the Selectmen have made a couple of appointments obliges us to... What's about wrong?
All right. Anything else for that?
6:30. And we are posted.
Yeah.
All right. Next item on the agenda is our, is our kickoff meeting with the department heads. This is an annual process that we go through in order to get things rolling for our budget. I think this year will maybe be a very difficult year in a lot of ways. He's right, advisory committee. And we've talked a little bit with the advisory committee about this, and we've talked about asking the department heads to, to submit a level... Advisory, we got some, okay. I'm going to do a quick roll call. So highway, highway here? Council on Aging?
President?
Rebecca's here. Chief Farnsworth?
Here.
Your fire department?
Here.
Here, okay. Planning?
Yes, I'm here for Bob Howarth, Joanne Fiori.
Okay, Joanne. Library? Is Ellen there? Someplace, yeah, okay. Parks?
Here.
Here, okay. Cemetery Commission?
Here.
Conservation?
Ted Giebert's here.
Okay. Assessors? Wendell, I see Wendell here, okay. Treasurer, I see Dick here. Town clerk, in the office next door. Town accountant. Who else we got? Okay, who's big guy?
Identify yourself.
Someone's taken by name, title? Jane's on, yeah, Jane's here, okay. All right. So basically, we'll start the budget process with advisory committee. They'll, they'll, I'll turn it over to them in a minute or so. And we had spoken briefly with the advisory committee last week, and we had talked about having a level service budget, I mean, we submitted a level service budget. We've talked a little bit about a level funded budget, which would probably mean cuts in service, and a two-and-a-half budget is what we talked about. So that's what we'll probably be looking at this year for each department to kind of look at and consider. From our, from my perspective, at least from our perspective, we have a number of items that could affect the budget depending on what happens. One of those, obviously, is the decision regarding the dispatch. The Salary Study Commission Committee, which we should be getting that report the end of this month, and we can make some decisions about that. We have two union contracts for negotiation there, starting in June, the end of June, which is the dispatchers, if we decide to stay with dispatch, and the police contract. We have the Highway Department Garage. We have a significant amount of money put aside for that, but it wasn't enough to do the construction, so whether we're going to add on to that, or want to add on to that, or have the money do that to get that job done. We have a Main Street water issue that we've talked about, you know, we're not coming for the Board. The school litigation, whether we'll need more funds to continue that, depending, and see where the decision is there. Then, of course, there's always the cherry sheet, what we get or don't get from the state, and the school, the regional budget, what they're looking at. And I think it's going to be a very difficult year for them with the pandemic and everything. So although I guess it's been reported that our percentage of students will go down a little bit, but I do think we still may have to make some larger investment there depending on what's going on. So I'm going to turn it over to the advisory committee real quickly for their comments about what they're going to pass out or get to the boards.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Don. Welcome, everybody, to the 2022 fiscal year budget department head meeting. Everybody had to stop on that one. As Don mentioned, we briefly discussed last week the objective for the upcoming year, and the objective is level service. Let's maintain what we have, and obviously, any variations from that will certainly be considered by advisory as in previous years. Now, Don mentioned the possibility of two other budgets in addition to level service, that being a level budget, which would, by necessity, implicate reductions, or a third budget being a 2.5% increase. From the perspective of advisory, I would suggest that we only need to see the level service budget, that being that any variations from that are assessed on their merits, either up or down. A budget that's, that's a 2.5% budget is just an arbitrary figure. You know, to maintain services in a particular department may or may not be a 2.5% increase. The fact that that's what we are limited to in terms of revenue increase really doesn't drive what we need to provide. The fact that that's what we are limited to in terms of revenue increase really doesn't drive what we need to provide by way of services. So while, while the, the select board may be interested in seeing that, advisory doesn't need to see a two and a half percent budget because it's of no, no particular use to us. We had had some discussion about reviewing each budget line to make sure that, that what is being budgeted is, in fact, necessary. Over the years, department hasn't done a very good job with tightening up the budgets in making it as efficient as it currently is. But we have noticed that there are a few budget lines that tend to be over budgeted each year. And so we would ask everybody to, to take a look at previous expenditures over the past couple of years, compare it to budget requests and see whether or not adjustments should be made there. Likewise, with, with budgets which tend to be overspent. The budgeting should be as realistic as possible, and if that means increasing a particular line, and it's justified, then please increase it so that, you know, our budget as a town reflects what it actually costs to, to deliver services in the town. Everybody, I believe, was sent a tentative schedule to that, did that go out? Yes, Pam? That obviously is tentative. In previous years, we've had to make adjustments to that. I don't see where this year is gonna be any different. Just, we would ask that you go through Kristin, which is another issue. Kristin is, is working from home, so we're gonna have some service issues in terms of information getting to her, getting through us, and out to everybody. So we asked that as, as we go through this process, we're building a little extra time to allow for delays because they're gonna happen this year. And please, you know, keep Kristin's time in mind as you're going through these requests, and, you know, keep in mind she's at home with two kids and remote learning, everything that implies. The, the, the actual procedure, it's, it should be the same as it's been in, you know, the last several years. Don't see any need to change that. Unfortunately, there probably gonna be a lot of remote meetings. Zoom is gonna continue to zoom. You know, we, as advisory, have not yet discussed whether or not we will meet in person or not. That's a discussion which we have yet to have. And we may just, you know, we may determine as a group that, you know, we prefer to be in person. We'll, we'll have to see, you know, where we are, where the pandemic is, as, as the spring rolls around. One of the big unknowns is the salary and, well, I guess what Don touched on, the salary study, which I believe is due either end of this month or the beginning of January. Is that, do you anticipate that having workable numbers in it in terms of the different positions in town? Or, or is it gonna be more of a?
Yes. I think they're gonna recommend a range related to the market in this region. In connection, as you're talking, I have, I know a department head's always asked the question. We have unions. Should we include in a level services or current services budget any contractual increases? This year, that's gonna be a little different because two unions have expiring contracts. So, and then the other department heads where there are no unions say, you just want us to come in with level wage and salary.
So my preference would be, you know, obviously, we need to comply with the union contract. For the non-bargain staff, what we've asked is just to roll over the current wage as a placeholder. So we don't set up some false expectations about what that salary will be before we know the salary recommendations coming from the study that you did. We didn't wanna, you know, float any kind of adjustment so that we, you know, we put, we put a number in the air. So we're gonna wait, given that it's so close.
Okay.
Yeah, the compensation is probably the largest unknown at this point. And I think it's prudent to carry forward existing salaries until we have a solid understanding of what the new compensation is going to be. And I'm assuming, and, and this is just me speaking, you know, extemporaneously, that, you know, this compensation study is gonna require some discussion among, you know, among the board and the department heads, as well as among townspeople in terms of what we do with this study. I mean, it's gonna contain information that's gonna require adjustments. You know, presumably, most of those adjustments are gonna be on the upward side as opposed to the downward side. So if, if there's, you know, the study recommends substantial increases, that's a discussion which has to occur in terms of how we approach that, whether it's, you know, a single year or multi-year adjustments. So until those discussions have happened, we're asking that, you know, any budgets that are submitted, just, just carry forward with the asterisks that it's, does not contain any adjustments. Okay? That makes sense? That's all I had. Carol, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
I would like to just tell you that I'm happy to help in any way that I can.
Thank you. We'll, we'll let, we'll let Kristin know. The, the two items that I also had on here were, have we received the pension assessment yet from county retirement?
Dick? No.
No, we haven't seen that yet? Yeah, it's, it's been jumping pretty substantially in the past several years. And the other is health insurance. Do we have any indication yet on, on health insurance?
The, the scene rates have been held even for the year. They're on a calendar basis, but we'll be, we're about six weeks away from, from setting the rates on the active employees.
Okay, great, thank you. Those are, those have historically been the drivers. You know, the rest of it, we can, we can pretty much manage, but those two are pretty much beyond our control. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I believe Carol and I are readily accessible. Obviously, put any questions either directly to us or to Kristin, and we'll make sure we get an answer. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go around the table here, or the, go around, go around the, what was that? What tic-tac-toe that game? Yeah, well, yes, Hollywood Squares. I wanna go around the Hollywood Squares here. But before I do that, for anyone, anyone who wasn't on it in the beginning of the meeting, I just want to reiterate again to all the department heads and all the town employees how much we appreciate all you've done, particularly in this pandemic year to keep this, the town running smoothly and getting the job done. So we really appreciate that. So I think the first person I'll call on, because I know he'll be brief, will be Superintendent Ganem. Do you have anything in particular you'd like to bring up or mention to us? I know he'll be brief. It's even better.
I'll brief you that.
Okay.
Good, good evening, and I, I promise to be brief. So, you know, I have Aaron Osborne is on as well too, and I know he's, you've had an opportunity to meet him as the Director of Finance and Operation and Human Resources as well too. And I'll, I'll let him talk really quickly in a second about the process that we started. One of the things that we should be proud of and that we're doing in our school district is that we have been offering, you know, in-person education. We have been doing the hybrid model since September tenth. One of the only communities in the entire western part of the state that are continuing to educate our kids, and safely. So we're really happy about that work that's happening and that's taking place. One of the things that you've heard me say publicly, as well as that we've said at school committee meetings as well too, it is an expense that goes along with educating our kids, doing the hybrid model. But we, we truly believe that is the best things for our students and for our staff as well. But I know that Aaron will talk to you really quickly as well too about the process that we started already internally, or I should say that he started internally in preparing for us for the budget. But I, I wanna thank, actually, to the same thing that you said earlier, thank everyone for the support they've given us because this has not been easy work for our teachers and for the district to be able to provide a hybrid education. But our families have been great, and our staff has been as well too. So I'll just turn it over to Aaron really quickly as well.
Sure. Just to be brief and dovetail on where Al sort of began us. We are entering round two of our budget process. Round one started mid-November. I met with principals and department heads to verify staffing and some fixed costs. Round two is another sit-down with each of them to sort of double verify all of those items, as well as talk about programmatic shifts and where they see spending going for this year. So we're almost midway through the year, so they have a, a good bead on where things are. Obviously, COVID, that has, has thrown things for a bit of a loop, but we're trying to, to do that. My goal is by early January to have a steady state sort of wireframe to work from. And then we will build from there around that. As, as many of you probably know, ninety percent of our budget is staffing and fixed costs. So, you know, once we have those items in place, the rest of it is, is really just building around that and figuring out what sort of programmatic shifts we have to make in terms of moving some of that staff around to meet the shifting needs of our students. And I'll leave it at that. If anyone has any questions, they're welcome to, I, I don't know, so this is a Q and A forum, but you're welcome to email me anytime or, or give the office a call. Thank you.
How's that for being brief?
Very good. I, I have one quick question.
Sure.
Schooling. How, I understand there's a lot, one hundred and thirty, is it because of the pandemic, or is it some other?
Which, which the one, I'm sorry, what do you mean the one thirty?
Is that the number of students we're down?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I know we've been looking at the number of homeschool students, and, and that has exploded. So I would say that the number of homeschool students is probably triple what it normally is. So that's, I think that's a big piece of, of where we're at.
Is it a temporary thing now because of the pandemic, or you think?
We're hoping so, yes. Very much hoping so.
I, I, I believe so, and when I look at us in comparison to what other communities, not that we're doing that, but it's, it's, it's what we're seeing across the entire state, never mind the entire country, that more and more families are homeschooling. But I think that will change as we go back into more and more in-person instruction. And I think our numbers are actually less because we're offering that in-person instruction as districts that are full remote.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, or Ariel?
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thanks, guys.
Stay and listen.
Thanks, guys.
Rebecca. What's going on at the senior center? How you doing?
Well, we're doing okay, thank you. I, I don't have too much. I think that in budget preparations, you know, in looking at our current budget, you'll probably see that our numbers are down a little bit. So there is the potential that we could have a little bit of surplus, but that's just because the building hasn't been open. You know, we, we don't turn the lights on in the common areas. We only have our lights on, you know, in our offices, and so some of those costs could be down. So, you know, I think in preparation for the next budget, I would really be looking at the cost for, you know, fully operating the building. So I just wanted to, to throw that out there. If you're seeing any costs that, you know, haven't been, any money that hasn't been spent in our line item, it could be as a result of no one being there. But we are, you know, hopeful that the senior center will open, you know, at some point, hopefully before July first. But if not, certainly in the next fiscal year. We're still waiting on feasibility study results to come back in, so I don't anticipate that that's going to be something that you'll be seeing for the next town meeting, but that is still out there. Yeah, and other than that, things are going well. Greater Springfield Senior Services will continue to fund the Grab and Go Meal Program. So while we are not open and don't have a congregate site, we will still continue to hand out meals curbside, and our numbers are continually on the rise. So it's been a beneficial program for the town.
Great, thank you. Thank, thanks, Rebecca, thank you.
Chief Farnsworth, you there?
Good evening, yes. You know, as, as you mentioned earlier, our budget is really dictated heavily by contracts, and both of the contracts are subject to negotiation right now. You know, and obviously, there is the whole, you know, dispatch situation sitting out there also. So, you know, I anticipate just carrying forward essentially what we have this year and wait on the, wait on the negotiation, but, you know, those numbers definitely, you know, contractual numbers for pay rate, but also overtime, contractually guaranteed overtime also takes up a significant, a very substantial piece of the budget also. So the negotiations will really drive where our budget goes. Beyond that, all, all fixed costs, you know, should stay, you know, within a reasonable rate of increase with the exception of, I just received notice that, you know, our software package that we use is subject to a five percent increase this year, which is, you know, definitely a jump for them. But in, in the, in the big scope of things, that's, that's small in comparison to our, you know, our payroll number, which obviously, again, is completely dictated by, by contract negotiations.
And you, you did okay this year. Were, I mean, you didn't have any, many officers out with, with quarantine or anything like that? It seemed like pretty, things were pretty safe over there.
We've had a, we've had a few officers out from time to time with it. You know, one officer, one full-time officer was out for, you know, a fairly significant amount of time with it. But, you know, as we stand right now, knock on wood, you know, we're doing okay, but we have had our share, fair share. But fortunately, we've been able to take, you know, a lot of, a lot of the backfill costs and stuff and, and attach it to the CARES Act. So that's, that's pretty much saved us. Other than that, you know, if we didn't have the CARES Act, we would, we'd be hurting pretty good right now, budget-wise.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, thanks, Jay. Fire Department?
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
For the fire department, our annual budget should be close to the same level funding as advisory's asking. We do have a few things that do need addressing on some of the equipment. I know our canker is over thirty years old, is going to need tires. Only reason I bring that up is it's a five thousand dollar bill for tires, and it's gonna be needing some mechanical work as well coming up. So I'll be looking probably to slightly increase our operational funds just to make the necessary repairs and maintenance to that truck. Other than that, I mean, I, I understand where the situation at town's in, and we're gonna try to make our budget as tight as always as, as we can for the town.
Where, where do we stand on the ventilation system?
On the ventilation system should be delivered by, I would say, right after the first of the year. It was a eight-week order, time to come in, and then they said they would install it the following week. So I expect after the first of the year, it should be arriving and installed.
And how did you, how did you do with your, your officers and men and women with the COVID?
We didn't, we didn't have any direct people out, COVID exposure for, say, on the job. We did have some exposure from our workers, not, you know, on their personal side. But it was only one person at one instance, so they, we had our proper PPE on at all times. And I can't say enough about the firefighters their town in, and they didn't step back, they stepped forward, and they did everything that they were expected to do every single time. So I thank them for that.
Thank, thank you. Library.
I'm sitting here with.
I'm sitting here with Kathy Rochford, the Chair of the Library Trustees. She has never been to one of these meetings before. Although it's not a normal meeting that we usually have.
Did you give her the first nine buttons?
So we are cruising right along here at the library. We had a big adjustment, obviously with COVID, to curbside pickup, which is going very well. Most libraries are doing that now, and everyone has their own way of doing it. And we kind of take the cue from our patrons. However, they want to get in touch with us, whether it's email, Facebook, by telephone. We kind of accommodate all the requests that people have. And doing all of our programming online has been new and different for us. It's been going okay. A lot of people are, I think, getting...having Zoom fatigue. So like Kate has been doing make-and-take crafts for the little kids to pick up. The parents come and pick them up when they pick up their books outside at the library pickup. But all my employees, I'm really proud of everyone. From day one, we've all really held firm with wearing our face masks, washing our hands, sanitizing all the surfaces frequently. We each have our own six-foot spaced workstation. So it took some adjusting, but we all did really well with that. And it's paying off because we're all healthy for the most part, as of today. And we also have been quarantining everything that comes into the library, all the books, DVDs, audiobooks. They all get quarantined for 72 hours in the Rochford Reading Room. So that's a little labor-intensive, but we did that from day one, and we're sticking with that because it's going well. People have been very patient. It takes a little bit longer to get their books, but it's been going pretty good. As far as the budget goes, we can do whatever needs to be done, depending if it's level funded or level service or a percentage. We just have the criteria of 19% of our operating budget needs to be spent on library materials to be certified with the state and compliant with their regulations. Although she's not here, Kate's not here, I want to say that she did a great job with the parade the other night, and the firemen and the police did also. Thanks.
Right, thanks. Questions, comments? Highway, Mark, you there?
Hello? Hi. Yes, good evening. Nothing major to report. I can say in a year that's been somewhat challenging, the Highway Department's services to the town went, you know, pretty much uninterrupted. And we were able to, you know, make it through the year, knock on wood, with no issues, no health issues or exposures or anything like that. I do consider us lucky in the fact that we have the ability to space ourselves apart and, you know, be outside in the fresh air. And I tell the employees all the time that, you know, we are lucky, but, you know, we still have to be careful what we do. So, and then as far as how the pandemic has affected our department... I'm sorry. How the pandemic has affected our department this year, again, not too bad, except for we had a delay on some road projects, which instead of they being done during the summer, they were done in the fall. Not a huge deal. But, and we'll have a couple very small projects to tend to in the spring. And then the other thing that I noticed too is like I came in about a minute late, and I noticed, Don, you were talking about the highway garage. And I think, you know, due to materials and labor costs on the rise because of the pandemic, that didn't go as planned. So I'm hoping we can revisit that in the spring as well at town meeting and have a plan going forward. Looking at my projected fiscal year '22 budget, I don't see any problems with a level service. A level service requirement.
Thanks, thanks, Mark. Any questions, comments? Thanks, Mark. Building, Wendell?
Hello?
Hi.
It's been a really crazy year, even despite the COVID. Think it would have been slower, but it's...people have been around their house. They've been working on their stuff. They're even really building new houses. There's not a lot of inventory out there. So it's affected my department, you know, in a weird way, where it's just you'd think it would have dropped off, but it's actually been busier than previous years. And I don't anticipate it really stopping in the coming year. There's new houses that are being constructed now. I have applications. So it's just...Hamden has a lot of open property, and people are looking for it. So they're going to be coming. Also, complaints have been up by about a triple this year as well, just because everybody's kind of locked in their homes, looking at what they don't like about their neighbors. I would just encourage people to be patient with your neighbor. They don't mean it most of the time. But things are good. Situation normal.
All right. Okay, thank you. The...let's see, where are we going to go here? A cemetery commission. Cemetery. Answer the report.
We don't really have anything new from this past year, or kind of status quo.
The fence looks good.
Thanks to Doug and John for the help with that.
Next, Parks Department. Parks, Rick?
Yeah, this year 2020 has been kind of tough for us on revenue with COVID. We lost a lot of registrations for soccer, baseball, and basketball. So our revenue will be down. Looking for 2021, potentially salaries could be a little lower than budgeted because we're not thinking we're going to have a basketball program. And if we do, it would be modified and smaller. But after that, our expenses should be level, pretty level, except for maybe the salary for the admin. So we should be pretty level to what we had in 2020.
The Spray Park was pretty successful, huh?
So the summer camp, the summer camp was very successful. And the Spray Park, yep, we had really no issues with that. That was really the shiny light for our year because, like I said, with all the sport registrations being confined due to COVID, registrations were significantly lower than expected.
All right. Conservation?
I'm here.
Hi.
Um, well, I don't have too much to report. We've just finished two big projects, the solar project at the landfill and then a proposed development on Bennett Road. And we finished those up last month's meeting. We've had some...nothing big besides that. Some requests for extension of their order conditions, a couple of violations, stuff like that. We've been meeting...we're still meeting on the third Wednesday of every month, but some months we've had overflow, so that I noticed that the first Wednesday of every month seems to be open. So last month, we posted both the first and the third Wednesday of the month for our meetings. That's about it.
Right, thank you.
Ted has something to add. Ted, got anything?
No, nothing particular. I didn't know you were there when I spoke up earlier, but I don't have anything.
All right, thank you. Board of Health, Transfer Station. Jane?
Hello. You guys already know that we're going to be needing a health agent as Lori has given her resignation for August. And like to have the public health nurse. Transfer Station is running great. The guys are there. They're working hard, have been healthy. And I think as a town also, we've done really pretty good with COVID. We've had a little hiccup where we were red, but we're back now. And I think we've done darn good as a town. I really do. And I'm proud of the people of our town and the leadership we have. I think it's been pretty good as far as budget goes. It is what it is. We're trying to save... I do. I try and save every penny I can.
You like that? Saving pennies, saving pennies. Kelly's going to...and now we're talking about all the money we're going to get. Kelly?
Hello, good evening. How are you? So yes, so I'll start off by saying that, you know, I came in as the new principal assessor in September. And during a pretty critical time, we had to kind of suddenly shift and start working remotely. But we were able to do so without any hiccups and get the tax rate set. So I'm very grateful for all of the support that was given to us in order to do so. Bob really helped me to get everything that I needed to work remotely with the laptop and Zoom for our meetings. Really, I mean, if we didn't have that in place when we did, you know, it could have really set us back, so I'm grateful that we had that support. As far as any changes in the office, obviously with me coming in, we have a new principal assessor. Jane has moved from a clerk to an associate assessor due to her increased experience and education that she has under her belt. Our office expenses, our software mapping, they look like they're going to be pretty similar to what they have been. I'm not anticipating any big changes there. We're planning to convert to our new appraisal system. However, that money was already appropriated, so we should be good there. The one new expense that we do anticipate is we have... We were given a notice from the Department of Revenue with a new requirement, which goes into effect for fiscal 2022. And it has to do with the valuation of our public utilities. So they are now requiring that, in addition to us getting the information the way that we have been to value them, that we need to have an outside consultant use another methodology. And so this is something that is going to be for us in our town. It's Columbia Gas, New England Power, Mass Electric Company, and N-Star. So we have four main public utilities. And that is something that we are in the process of getting some quotes for. And we'll have to see whether or not that should be included as a budget line item or included in an award article. But that is the only new expense that we are anticipating for the fiscal year.
You got any idea what that expense would be?
Not at this time, no. I've reached out to our DOR rep, and I've reached out to a couple people. I'm waiting to get some quotes. So I will...I should have all of that in place before submitting everything, but at this time, I do not. And I'm also...I have also reached out for some clarification on whether this is going to be an annual expense or if it's something that needs to be done for fiscal 2022 and then on a recertification year, which if that was the case, it would be once every five years. At this time, they did not have an answer for me. They said that we would know more in January.
Okay. All right, thanks, Kelly. Planning Board, Planning Board, what are you planning?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I don't believe Bob's in on this, is he?
No.
Okay, then I'll speak for him. I wasn't sure. Good evening. As far as planning, it should be pretty much level funded. We've got a couple solar projects that should be coming up and running soon. One being the Ames Road. It's a joint project with Wilberham. BB Road and Ames Road, that should be up and running soon. We have Rear Summers Road also in the process. They're being held up a little bit. So that project should be a little delayed, but it's on its way. And also possibly another proposed solar project coming up for Allen Street, possibly in January. And other than that, we should be running close to budget. I know we're under budget a little bit in salaries due to the COVID and only reporting 21 hours versus what was budgeted. So as far as salaries, we may be under this year, but it's due to COVID. Other than that, everything should be pretty close to budget.
No, I bet you...the Allen Street project, is that right? Like on the corner of Stony Hill and Allen?
Yes, that's...yes, yep.
The farm that used to be the farm there, yeah.
They were going to come into our last meeting, however, they didn't have the proposed site plans completed. So they're going to probably come in in January, the first meeting in January.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see, she does appeal to assessors. Kelly, that was you. Forget it. You're done. Let's see, well, we have our accountant and our town treasurer. Anything to report? Accountant? There he is. Go ahead.
I...to report, I just keep track, and right now... I watch you all spend that money. You know?
How are we doing at it?
I think we're doing well. You know, I think, you know, watching revenues again... I always try to watch the revenues against going out versus what's coming in. And we're holding our own. You know, we haven't hit snow and ice yet, you know? I guess we're going to start that tomorrow night. My budget's going to be the same. If there's any adjustment, it'll be in whatever salary survey comes back or whether or not you agree with the salary survey, whether it's a raise or a decrease, I don't know. But all my other expenses are pretty maintained. However, I'm not sure about the audit. '22, I believe, is our audit year. So I would have to try to get ahold of Tom Scanlon and see what they're charging. We've usually been around $12,000 to $14,000 with him for a two-year audit. We tried to do an interim audit in August, but because of COVID and his restrictions and the difficulty in the towns he's working from, working with, and COVID, we're not going to have that. So that money will be turned back because I do have that money in the budget. Other than that, so I would say if the salary was leveled, you'd probably see a net increase of about $6,000 in my budget. And that would be due to the audit we're going to need. And that's...we don't have to do an audit. We could wait another year. But if we do it now, it's 12,000 to 14,000. We're at another year. It's about 25,000. We've done one every other year.
All right. Treasurer, anything on the horizon? You've got pretty good insight.
Really nothing to do to report. I will comment that it's kind of amusing that it was only 12 days ago that we set the 2021 budget and tax...final tax rate. And less than two weeks later, we're starting on the next year. It just never gets a break, but no, I don't see any surprises so far.
All right, thank you. Town Clerk? Sheila's there, I think?
I'm there.
Okay.
Not seeing any big changes. I'm not seeing any big changes for fiscal '22. As a matter of fact, on the plus side, my elections budget is going to be way... As a matter of fact, on the plus side, my elections budget is going to be way down compared to what this year has been. I think that's, I'm going to try to recoup what I can from COVID. We're looking at probably an additional $4,000 or thereabouts that we had to spend beyond what we might have otherwise. I'm hoping to get some of that back, or most of it back. Other than that, no real big changes for the clerk side. On the collector's side, we're pretty much status quo. I mean, our, our collection rate is not really down, which is a good thing. I don't know what it's going to be like in the coming months, because I think we'll be more, we'll feel more of an impact from all those people being out of work. But right now, we're still in pretty good shape.
All right, thank you. Did I miss anyone? Thanks. That's, that's, that's very good. I guess we're all set, all set, any questions? Thank you, everyone, I really appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you and getting this done for the town. Thanks a lot. Town reports, don't forget your town reports.
Don, could I, could I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
It's Becky from the Senior Center. I, just to clarify, so I know that the Advisory Committee is looking for just that level service budget with salaries just to be rolled over as a placeholder, but I know that Mary Ellen, you had also mentioned two additional budgets. So for the departments that report to you, the Board of Selectmen, are you looking for, for three different budgets, or are we going with just the level service that advisory is looking for?
We'll, we'll look for a level service budget. If we have any question, we can come back to you, because most of the departments are, it's all salaries.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, I saw Ed on.
I, I, he's not, he's off. He's off. I, I asked him to come on, and John's looking out, this is just correspondence.
Right.
Most of the things we would want to discuss are probably at the exec side.
Okay. Thank you.
It's not that bad. You think that? I'd like to say, you know. But I would, I would just say what I do.
Good night. Good night, thank you.
I think it's appropriate that you announce your least. I saw you call you the day.
I haven't seen it yet. I'll have to look at, I'll have to look at it.
Tell that Ed sent. That's a public comment.
Well, it is. I didn't, I didn't know.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh.
The Town Administrator's report?
Traffic in Boston is that, is that your report?
I have to take the task on that. I really don't have any, have any thing.
Do we have coming up, well, the next meeting is going to be goal setting. So maybe each of us should bring you a goal or a couple of goals.
You're also, Wilbraham.
Next meeting is be goal setting.
And the next meeting is going to be at Wilbraham.
Yeah, the Wilbraham, Wilbraham meeting starts at seven.
And what is the schedule this week for tours?
Well, yeah, that, that'll be Wednesday, and there's Capitol Committee's at four o'clock on Tuesday. I'm sorry, State Gaming Commission's at one o'clock tomorrow. And on Wednesday, I have the departments meeting, and at nine o'clock, we have the MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Project meeting. I told them, they're going to be, at the two-hour meeting, I told them I'll be in for an hour.
Now, that's not just us, that's municipality information all, but?
That's right. That's right. Also, we've set up for 11:30 on Wednesday, a tour of Wilbraham Dispatch, and at one o'clock, a tour of Westcom Dispatch. I will send you tomorrow morning a listing of these.
Well, well, we're on dispatch, you should have received a email from the Chief of Police, the Fire Chief, the ambulance.
Yeah.
The ambulance, and, and also I, I've asked Marcus Communications to provide us some information, what it would mean if there was any additional cost if we went.
I don't think I saw a reply from the Fire Chief.
Yes, it was very, it was tagged.
It was tagged. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Any other business?
You're going to post, you're going to post the, do you have to post the tours if more than one of us is?
I don't think you have to post the tours.
We're not discussing.
Yeah, because it's just, it's just a.
No deliberation.
No deliberation, and it's just a informational gathering.
No deliberation.
You couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't have the public because, you know. Anything else to come before the committee? The Board?
And so where do we stand for the school board? Do we have any, do we stand anywhere to that? The school, if you want?
Want to look at Ed's letter first? Yeah. Set a date after that, yeah.
I have also asked the Wilbraham Administrator if the Wilbraham Board has had any further comment on the proposed IMA, and are they agreeable to it as it stands? I don't have a response yet.
All right, anything else to come before the Board? Move to Board if you prefer. All in favor? Aye.
I didn't. I know, it was a good night, Gerber. So.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for joining.
Good night, everyone.